Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So everyone's had an opportunity to read those things from the last meeting?
Aye. All right. Joan Hoda-Wan at Scranton. I was very pleased to see the county establishing a Lackawanna County Literacy Committee. And I was looking at the list of appointees. I think you say you need nine members, but there are only seven names identified. When I looked at the names, I know some of them, I assume that they're all very qualified.
Very.
But I would strongly suggest for the remaining two vacancies, you consider appointing one or both those positions within the county library system. You have trained librarians in seven county libraries whose profession is literacy. So I don't know why you only have seven members nominated at this time, but I think it would serve the county well having a trained librarian. That's one. Okay, and, let's see. Resolution 36, appointment to the county redevelopment authority. I saw in that piece of legislation on the backup that you're appointing Charles Jefferson. Charlie Jefferson is a fantastic landlord. I live in Samters and he's, the building's great. He's done great work downtown and I assume throughout the county. Here's my question though. His business is redevelopment, in a sense. He renovates buildings, buys properties. Could there be a perceived conflict of interest putting him on an authority like this? I'm only talking about perceptions here. Could there be a perception of a conflict of interest? Have you talked to him about this?
I have not, but I don't believe that would be the case at all.
Okay.
He served before. This is a reappointment.
He's being reappointed, I know. I wasn't aware that he was on the board to begin with. That's the only reason I ask. Do they vote on issues? Are they controlling funding? Or is it simply an advisory function?
All right, Joan.
Well, I think the solicitor can speak upon this, but you know, if there's a conflict of interest that arises and something they vote on, it's in their bylaws, they would have to abstain.
Have to abstain.
Yeah, Joan, so I mean, it's a very good question, but yeah, if specifically any issue arose
Okay.
that was...
I just want to ask the question before it becomes an issue down the road.
No, listen, right?
As I said, his work is fantastic. I hope he doesn't make me leave Samters. Please don't make me go.
Well, what did they say? Measure twice, cut once, right? So I get it.
But no, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, I wasn't aware that he had been on the authority. And you don't want to create a problem if you don't need one. And it's a simple matter of saying, in the event of conflict of interest, he recuses himself from voting.
Yep.
That may solve the problem, but I think you have to acknowledge that he's a well-known developer throughout the county.
Sure, sure.
Okay?
And I think that's the reason for having him on, so that we can continue to develop.
Yeah, but he's got competition too. There's John Besseliga, there's Art Russo, there are other people too.
And they're all, they all interact with each other. I do not believe there would ever be a conflict.
Okay, I'm just asking the question because, you know, for an outsider looking at it, it just said, what? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Joan, as you know, any issue that would arise, really on any board in which any individual would have an interest pecuniary or otherwise, they as a matter, of course, would abstain or recuse themselves from that specific vote. Yeah?
Thanks.
And as far as the literacy committee is concerned, Ms. Hart has been spearheading that with Sandy Lamana. And it's been a work in progress. We actually began to do it prior to the pandemic. And she's, and the applicants are all, and they're all, they'll all be public. Everyone can see their resumes. They're all outstanding. And there are still two left, and that's actually a good idea, Joan. But we're, you know, we're open-minded on it, and we've been trying to do this for a couple of years now. And it's just getting to this point, so, but thank you. Okay, anyone else? Resolutions 230041.
Proving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 352-294-3529, inclusive totaling $2,840,697.52. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $1,922,806.80. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230031.
Resolution, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania approving the financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority of certain capital projects for the benefit of Marywood University. Whereas, Marywood University is requesting that the authority financing project, consisting of, among other things, all or any of the following: the acquisition, design, construction, renovation, quipping, and furnishing of the, in addition to the Keith J. O'Neill Center for Healthy Families, renovations to the Insolaco Center for Studio Arts, and the Shield Center for Visual Arts, and various other capital improvements to the university's existing facilities, and financing contingencies, and paying the costs and expenses incident to the issuance of bonds. Whereas, in order to finance the project, the authority will issue one or more series of its university revenue bond or notes in an aggregate principal not to exceed $15 million on behalf of the university. Whereas pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, all debt issued by the authority must be approved by the applicable elected representative of the governmental unit in which the project is located and of the governmental unit on behalf of which the authority acts or issues bonds after a public hearing following reasonable public notice. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the county is the applicable elected representative of the county within the meaning of the code. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board as follows in connection. With the financing of the project by the authority, the Board hereby declares it to be a desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the county and an area served by the university, and the project to have the project provided by and financed through the authority. The Board hereby empowers, authorizes, and directs its chairman, or in his absence, any other member of the Board to execute and deliver on an approval applicable representative in the form attached here too. The approval granted hereby shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of the principal of, or interest on, or any obligations issued by the authority in connection with the project. This resolution shall become effective immediately. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 2nd, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is Bond Counsel, Mr. Brian, Attorney Brian Kuzlansky.
Brian?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is typical resolution that you've seen before for Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority financings when they assist with these projects. This is a straight new money deal for Marywood University, renovations, improvements to their campus facilities. Fidelity Bank is the lender for this, and as mentioned in the resolution, no obligation on the county to make any payments. There's no funds of the county in use. It's really just the function of the approval for the authority to proceed with this financing. Happy to answer any questions.
To clarify, Mr. Chairman, today is February 1st, not February 2nd.
Okay.
As I read.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for Brian? No? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Resolution 230032.
Entering into an agreement with the Humane Society of Lackawanna County, whereas Lackawanna County is the county of the third class operating and governed pursuant to the Home Rule Charter, Lackawanna County and others were affected and significantly impacted by the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic, which was declared in March 2020. And whereas many nonprofit agencies worldwide, in particular in Lackawanna County, were faced with devastating economic and financial challenges and losses resulting from the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. And these nonprofit agencies here in Lackawanna County experience a continuing need for financial and economic assistance so that they may continue existing and providing services to the residents of Lackawanna County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby enter into an agreement dated February 1st, 2023, with the Humane Society of Lackawanna County, the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter, 967 Griffin Pond Road, Clark Summit, Pennsylvania, 18411, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, to provide essentials to help homeless, unwanted, and abused animals in accordance with the American Rescue Plan. The program will provide for, but is not limited to, staff, food, medicine, and supplies the shelter requires to operate. This grant will fund the sub-recipient, the Humane Society of Lackawanna County Griffin Pond Animal Shelter, who has been negatively impacted by the pandemic. Subsequently, this grant will assist with adopting safer operating procedures, weather periods of closure, and mitigate financial hardship resulting from the COVID-19 health emergency. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following American Rescue Plan Act grant. The Humane Society of Lackawanna County Griffin Pond Animal Shelter for the funding of the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter Program to benefit the nonprofit who has been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in the amount of $200,000. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to the grant program. This program and this grant is contingent on the condition of our solicitor's approval. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution states that the county is awarding an ARPA grant in the amount of $200,000 to the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter, which was established as the Humane Society of Lackawanna County in 1938 to provide shelter for homeless, unwanted, and abused animals. The shelter has been negatively impacted due to COVID-19 pandemic, and these funds will assist in providing the desperately needed services for our animals. I also have Sherry Crowley here, who is the Development Director for Griffin Pond, who can tell you a little bit more about what this means.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. We would just like Griffin Pond to say thank you to each and every one of you for giving us this opportunity and supporting us, especially supporting the unwanted homeless animals in Lackawanna County. And we're just, we're just so thankful for the support, so thank you.
Thank you.
We're glad we're able to be of some assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Okay, anyone other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Commissioners, at this time, you're going to get your picture taken with Brenda and Griffin Pond and check. Congratulations.
Jerry's favorite.
I know the drill.
Let's everybody take a step that way. One or two steps that way. All right, here we go. Everybody smile. We'll take a couple. Flip it up a little more. Find where it was.
Okay. I really sure it didn't mind cover me. Remember, shoot down.
I know.
Your flash wasn't on.
I know. Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, resolution 230033.
Authorizing the development of the Northern Lackawanna Planning Association. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby authorized the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program. Whereas, the County of Lackawanna, on behalf of the city of Carbondale, the boroughs of Mayfield and German, and the townships of Carbondale and Greenfield, known as the Northern Lackawanna Planning Association, NORLAC, will be undertaking a project to develop a multi-municipal comprehensive plan and implement said plan through zoning ordinances, updates, and whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development makes it available, grants in aid to such projects through the Municipal Assistance Program. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby commits municipal resources in the amount of $15,000 as a match for said project. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman here is Director Sacco.
This resolution states that the county is authorizing the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Pennsylvania Municipal Assistance Program on behalf of five NORLAC municipalities to develop a regional comprehensive plan and update the local sorting, zoning ordinances. Any questions?
Okay, anyone have any questions for Brenda? Intertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230035.
Approving an Office of Drug and Alcohol Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approve the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs Provider Agreement with Mountain's Edge Recovery Center LLC for the fiscal year 22 through 23. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is Drug and Alcohol's Fiscal Officer, Ms. Noel Patrici.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. So I am here today to request your support of our office in the county entering into a contract with Mountain's Edge Treatment Center. Mountain's Edge is a treatment center located in Uniondale, Pennsylvania, Susquehanna County. They are an outpatient drug and alcohol program with a live-in component, and it's a great benefit for the residents of not only Lackawanna County, but also Susquehanna County. These services are covered by the state and will not cost the county any dollars or any additional money. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hello, Noel. Okay, resolution 230039.
Authorizing and assigning the responsibility of the American Rescue Plan Act. Whereas, the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, was signed into law on March 11th, 2021, included the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program, a part of the American Rescue Plan, and delivered $350 billion to state, local, and tribal governments across the country to support their response to and recovery from the COVID-19 public health emergency. And whereas, the county is grateful for these federal funds that were made possible to assist the residents of Lackawanna County respond and recover from the negative impacts of COVID-19. And whereas, the counties of Lackawanna's allocation is 40 million, 40.7 million of the 65.1 billion allocation to counties. And whereas, 10% or 4 million can be allocated towards administrative costs. And whereas, in order to design, implement, monitor, and properly report the use of 40.7 million dollars in federal funds, the county administration has needed to augment its internal capabilities, and such capabilities are currently enhanced through the firm, through a firm the county is contracting with for regulatory compliance. And that by designating an ARPA director at the county is necessary to ensure the county does not lean too heavily on consultants. And whereas, the ARPA director's work would mirror the processes and type of work done by the current Director of Economic Development with respect to directing the county's existing federal, state, and local funding, but would require substantial work to ensure the county expends, commits all $40.7 million in an impactful and compliant manner before the federal deadline in 2024. And whereas, combining the roles of ARPA Director and the Director of Economic Development would drastically increase efficiency in economies of scale within the county, but would require that position to perform substantial additional work specifically under the auspices of ARPA and in accordance with ARPA's strict reporting and eligibility requirements. And such work is not currently contemplated for that role. And whereas, the county acknowledges that its current Director of Economic Development, Brenda Sacco, possesses capability, experience, and work ethic, has successfully administered and closed out $18.9 million in COVID-19 county relief block grant program funding in 2020, and has already demonstrated a willingness to work above and beyond for the county. And under this new arrangement, will expertly perform the functions of both ARPA Director and Economic Director. Whereas, the county reserves the right to amend this resolution or any portion thereof from time to time, as it shall deem advisable, in the best interest of the promotion of the purposes and intent of this resolution and the effective administration thereof. And now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby authorized and assigned the Director of Economic Development the responsibilities of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Director, with a start date of January 1st, 2022, to be renewable every year for five years. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon this is our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Balzoni.
Dave, good morning.
Thank you and good morning. While this resolution and its approval is more of a formality, it is nonetheless important. The county has designated a program manager, but not formally. The imperative surfaced when we were discussing compensation and also just ARPA allocations going forward. The approval of the resolution should be a prelude to any further discussions about the application of ARPA funds, albeit in some cases after the fact, but certainly going forward.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230040.
Entering into a maintenance agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby enter into a maintenance agreement for Reed Generator Service LLC for the following locations: Our courthouse, the Jefferson Gateway Building, the Government Center, Criminal Justice Center, and 315 Franklin Avenue. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Mark Duer.
This is our 2023 annual maintenance agreement that we do every year with Reed's Generator. They know our system, they know our generators, and they do a great job. I feel at this time that approval of this agreement will greatly help us, the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mark?
Nope.
Intertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Another question? All in favor? Aye. Resolution.
Thank you.
230034.
Appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board with a term to commence February 1st, 2023, and continue through January 31st, 2026. Mr. Drew Simpson, the Council Representative and Area Manager for the Northeast Pennsylvania Eastern Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters, sitting as the representative of labor and with apprenticeship affiliation. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, this is just a reappointment of the labor representative on the board.
I understand. All right, any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
My question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 230036.
Appointment to the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority. Kevin McDonough of Scranton, a five-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2027. Charles Jefferson of Scranton, another five-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2027. Aaron Whitney of South Abington Township, another five-year term to begin immediately and to expire December 31st, 2027. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority. Mr. John McNulty, also of South Abington Township. And he is to fill the unexpired term of Kevin Mitchell, to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Intertain a motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 230042.
Appointment to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee as per ordinance 281. The committee shall be comprised of nine members, who shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, with staggered terms of service of three committee members appointed to a two-year term, three committee members appointed to a three-year term, and three committee members appointed to four-year terms. Upon expiration of the initial appointed terms, all terms for committee members shall be for a period of four years. Members of the committee shall continue to serve until their successors have been appointed and qualified. Patricia Heine of Scranton, a two-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024. Colleen Judge of Carbondale, a three-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Attorney James Mulligan of Music, a three-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Dr. Sabine Charles of Clark Summit, a three-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Sandy Lamana of Clark Summit, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026. Donna Salva of Dalton, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026. And Ms. Tracy Hart, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
And as I stated when Joan raised the question earlier, the resumes are available. And these are all people that are, have been vetted and are very qualified. And we will take that into consideration, what you mentioned.
Yeah, well, I did, I guess I could say on the, for on the question, but anyway, did we have anybody from the library system apply at this point, so?
No.
Okay. All right, so they have the opportunity to apply anyways.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Another question? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Motions, 230037. I'd like to make a motion to award the grant for the funding of the wall project.
I will second that.
On the, I made a motion, you seconded. On the question? No, you didn't second it.
He seconded. You made the motion.
Oh, he seconded, okay. Another question? All in favor? What's that?
You have to read the whole thing.
Let Brian read it.
This is a motion to award the G.C. Smith Road Retaining Wall Replacement Project in Elmhurst Township to T. Brennan Heavy Equipment Incorporated, 66 Crystal Lake Road, Fell Township, Pennsylvania, 18407. The lowest most qualified bidder with a total bid of $225,670. And here to speak upon that, Mr. Chairman, is our engineer, Mr. Frank Suma.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a motion to award the G.C. Smith Retaining Wall Replacement Project. This wall is located along a tributary to Roaring Brook, just off G.C. Smith Road in Elmhurst Township. The existing wall is failing and rotating into the stream in the new project. This project would replace about 100 feet of that wall. The lowest qualified bidder of four public bids was T. Brennan Heavy Equipment Incorporated at a price of $225,670. And it is our recommendation to proceed with the award. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I'll call. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion 230038.
Mr. Chairman, this is a motion to award the Willow Street Bridge Replacement Project in Dalton Borough to Pioneer Construction Company Incorporated, 3298 Lake Area Highway, Holmesdale, Pennsylvania, 18431, to the lowest most qualified bidder with a total bid of $787,164.50. Once again, Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that, or answering any of your questions, is the county engineer, Mr. Frank Suma.
Frank?
This bridge is located over tributary to Ackley Creek on Willow Street in Dalton Borough. The bridge was closed in the summer of 2020 after signs of beam failure were discovered. The project would remove the existing bridge and replace the structure with a new concrete box culvert. The timeline is projected to be, to have the contractor start this coming spring, weather permitting. And the timeline is projected to have the project conclude before winter, so for one single construction season. And the project would be completed under detour. So the proposal is to close that one block of Willow Street with the, with the one-block detour using Church Street and Lily Lake Road.
Just close now, right?
It has been closed, so no change either. It has been closed since, since the bridge needed to be closed two years ago.
Okay, Frank. I'll make that motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
My question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoda-Wan at Scranton. Now, y'all know that I'm not a young lady. And I went to the library last night at 5:00 p.m. and I couldn't find the agenda. It hadn't been posted by then, so I went back at 9:00 o'clock this morning and I found it. Of course, I had to hustle to get back down here for this meeting. Is, do you have a policy of when you post your agenda? Say again? It wasn't posted last night by 5:00 p.m. Why didn't it show up? Why didn't it show up when I accessed the county website?
I do not know, but I did it yesterday by 11:00 in the morning.
Hmm, then there's an issue. So what I'll do in the future is if I can't find it on the website, give you a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Duncan?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gary Duncan. I'm a resident of Dunmore and a lifelong resident of Lackawanna County. I've spent 45 years in healthcare as either a nurse or an occupational therapist, so I don't think there's any municipality in Lackawanna County that I haven't been in, that I haven't treated somebody in. And I take great pride in saying I've voted in 51 consecutive years for every election, so I appreciate government, and I appreciate what you folks do. But I come here today as the chairman for the Pennsylvania Council on Aging. Just in reference, Pennsylvania Council on Aging serves as an advocacy group for the older residents of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, all 67 counties. There are 16 of us nominated by the governor. We received Senate approval. There's five additional members. They are our regional chairs. So I have a northeast region, southeast region, the central region, southwest, and the northwest region. I'm on the phone almost every daily, every day. We don't get paid for this. We're an advocacy group of volunteers, but as such, we do reach out to the governor and other members of the legislature. You're all aware that right now in Harrisburg, we don't have a Rules Committee yet because of the special elections and the things going on, so I don't have committee chairs or vice chairs in either party to reach out to. I got a call, actually, I've gotten several calls from my regional chairs across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and it's about utility rates, and that's why I'm here today. I'm not just throwing random numbers at you, and I know my time is limited, but the 2020 census, Lackawanna County, we have 215,896 citizens. I represent the elderly, the older population of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Lackawanna County, people over 65 years of age, 20.3% of our population, this is as per the 2020 census, not Gary Duncan, comes out to 10,794.8 citizens. I've done my homework when I came down here. Persons in poverty in Lackawanna County, 13.7%. 2020 census, not Gary Duncan's numbers. I take these right out of the census. I understand about low-income housing, the energy assistance programs. We look at that. I have a legislative chair. I get every piece of legislation that comes across the board for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So I take this to heart when I come here today. I know why he gives anywhere from $300 to $1,000, but I am, just want to run a few things by you folks, just to stimulate a few synapses. PPNL utility rates, this is from December 1st, 2022. These aren't ancient numbers. They jumped 18% for an increase of about $22 a month. UGI, their rates have gone up 7.6%. That was as of September 1st, and if you take a look, Boris is here today at the January 27, 2023 edition of the Scranton Times. There's about a five-paragraph article in there indicating that UGI increased another rate increase of 8.9%, which is going to take your average consumer from about $192 a month to about $209 a month. It doesn't sound a lot until you start adding up the various utility rates. Water Company requested a 4% increase for Scranton, which is Scranton and Dunmore where I reside. So that's taking it up an additional amount of money. There's a PUC number that you can call if you have a complaint. It's difficult, and especially for the older folks, the people that I deal with, to go on websites, to get through the menu of items, to contact the PUC. And the numbers that I've given you today don't include almost record inflationary rates, again, from economists, not from myself. We have 8% increases. We have a food crisis, groceries, and the other cost of living. So why am I here today? I'm here today, again, I respect what government can do. I deal with a lot of government officials. What I am requesting, when I spoke to my central region person the other day, I'm requesting all of our folks to reach out to the government at all levels, all municipalities, and request that if you folks can reach out to the PUC and to reach out to our newly-elected governor, requesting a moratorium on all utility rate increases until at least June. I have grave concerns about cold weather. It's going to be here again this week, and we know what happened a few weeks ago with it. The utility rates have tripled. I understand that there's an investigation of PPNL. I get all of that, but besides that, I'm still requesting a moratorium on utility rates. I think something on county letterhead probably holds a lot more weight than you may appreciate. I think, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us to let our elected officials at even a state level know. When you take a look at the levels in Lackawanna County, the folks over the age of 65, that's me. So we're all affected by this. When we have a fixed income, everybody doesn't have a pension. They're living on Social Security. I don't want to see anybody lose their home because we can't pay utility rates. So I'm requesting today respectfully that you folks get something out, notifying the PUC that this county is aware of it, that we're requesting a moratorium, and if you can get a letter out to the newly-elected Governor Shapiro. And that's it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary.